Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 20th, 2015, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Local Access Programming. Is there anyone in the audience tonight recording? Okay, thank you. There being none, please rise and join in as soon to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is new applicant Patriot Homes Inc., special permit for two Hammerhead lots under Section 5.3.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for construction of two single-family homes on property located at 56 Packagug Street, Auburn, Mass. Assessor's map, 7 Lot 162. Please introduce yourself.
I have an entertaining motion to open the hearing, please.
Make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Hello, everyone. Good evening again. Peter Hauger, owner of, co-owner with Stephen Bracewell, partner for Patriot Homes. We started a new company to purchase, renovate farmhouse at 56 Packagug and then subdivide the land. There was a draft schematic from Graves several months back where we're going to attempt to do some townhouses and just kind of decided to go away from that and go with something a little more similar for the two Hammerhead lots.
I'm Jim. I'm in.
Yes, please.
I've done a little preliminary research for the group and we also have some imagery. So for Hammerhead lots through the special permit process, there's some criteria in our bylaws that the plan must conform with and I was able to review these in advance of the filing with the applicant to make sure that the plan before us today conforms with those sections. This is a section of the bylaw. Guess you'd like to follow along. I'm going to go through them and just talk about the plan and how it conforms to the requirements. So the first section requires that the Hammerhead lots must have a minimum of 50 feet of frontage. We're showing two Hammerhead lots each with 50 feet, so that section 5321 is good. The next requirement is that the size of the lots, these two lots actually surpass the requirement by two times that. It needs to be 20,000 square feet. Both are over 40,000. The section is met. The maximum amount of Hammerhead lots on a contiguous parcel is two and that's what we're seeing here, two. The diameter for the circles for the home must be equal to the frontage, which is 100 feet in the zone. Each radius is 50 feet, so the circles do not go over the property lines, so that section is met. Section 5235 says that you can't create a Hammerhead lot where there's a residence or a structure already in place, but on Lot 2, that's actually a barn and I did confirm this with the assessors today and it was a milk for cows grazing in the past, so it's not a residence in any way and the proposed dwelling would be, I believe, in its footprint. So that section was met as well. The Hammerhead lots have to be restricted to single-family dwellings. That's what we're seeing here. You need to show topography, wetlands, and the proposed structures and those are here. That's 5236. 5237 shows that the circles for the homes have to be outside of the handles of the Hammerhead lot, which they are, so that section is good. 5238 says it has, must have adequate access, the billable portion for emergency vehicles, fire, et cetera. We're seeing the 50 feet of Hammerhead frontage, no proposed structures or obstructions in the way, so that section appears to be good. 5239 is...
5329. No, that's okay.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
5329.
To make sure for the record that it's clear.
Is more of a condition for the board to consider and it is a special permit authorizing Hammerhead lots. It'll provide that no Hammerhead lot shall not be further divided to reduce its area or to create additional building lots. Means it can't be further divided afterwards. It's a condition for us to consider for approval. The irregularity lot on the other side is 533. There's an equation that the lots have to meet a certain threshold, which both lots do. One of them was exactly that requirement and the other one had surpassed it, so those...
Matt, what do the letters in the equation stand for?
Unfortunately.
Stand for?
I believe one of them's perimeter and the A is area, so I have to do the math on those. It was a lot of fun.
You didn't know what the error is?
I'm sorry?
Regularity factor.
Yes.
There it is.
So each one, Lot 2 came out to .400, exactly the minimum requirement, so that one qualified. And Lot 3 is .76, so that one was over the requirement. So in, this property's been in existence since, I believe, our assessors' records show 1870, so it was built long before 1995, so there's no performance issues. In addition to that, there's also a frontage requirement in Section 522, which isn't in front of us, but you have the contiguous frontage for the first lot of 100 feet for the original house and then the 50 feet for each of the Hammerhead lots.
Each of the driveways.
Correct. And neither of these are a corner lot, so there's no conflict there. And even though Lot 2 shows, well, proposed, it's not proposed, but there's the ability for frontage on Alex Circle, that's not what's being proposed today. The 50 feet of frontage for the Hammerhead lot is on Packagug Street, so that's not in the equation. So the Hammerhead lot requirements, after my review, look conclusive and very...
On 5325, you spoke of a barn being there and the house proposed would be on the footprint of the barn when it's removed.
Yes.
I assume it was going to be removed. Which one is that?
This is...
The one with the, I can't quite read it.
Sure.
Right here in the dwelling.
Is a white...
Back with the house out in the front.
You can see it on the map, Ronnie.
Is the barn number 56?
Yes.
Actually, on that map, the 56 is sitting right on top of the barn.
Right.
But the whole parcel is 56, the address included the barn.
Correct, that's this one.
That's the barn.
So see the barn right there?
Yep. That's right. The 56 should be on this.
Now, where are the two driveways going with your pointer?
I'm going to, I'm opening the plan on the screen so we can see it a little better, but they'll be, one will be here.
Over here.
And the other one will be adjacent to it, running off the back to the house back here. As soon as the PDF opens, there we go. It'll be a little easier for us to see. One driveway's here, going towards where the barn is now, and then the other driveway goes across the parplay line to the back to the other proposed home. So you can note from our plans, there's some wetland areas. This is still going to be pending conservation and I'm sure the applicant can address that in just a moment. That's the Hammerhead lot requirements for the planning board. In addition to special permit requirements we have under Section 93, we can go if the board makes a vote tonight.
Is there any slopes on this lot?
I'll let the applicant address it. I know there are.
Relatively flat.
Yeah, it's relatively flat. I don't think, let's see.
Does it slope a little going up Packagug if you're looking at it from the frontage?
From the frontage, it slopes from the back left corner down towards Alex Circle slightly.
Can you do the street? Oh, okay, that's probably better. So I took these today.
It's fairly flat.
Does it feel a little bankin', but that's not...
Yeah, it's an open cow pasture.
It's mostly flat. The site pitches towards kind of this way, this direction where there's the wetlands on the plan, but mostly flat. The grades don't change by all too much.
Paul, do you have any questions?
Looks like it conforms. Looks like it should be doable.
Jim? Ronnie? Jonathan? Anyone in the audience? No? Okay.
Anything else from them?
Any other comments?
No.
No. So you need a motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing.
Make the motion to close the hearing.
Good.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the Hammerhead lots special permit?
Lots, two lots.
Lots special permit. Any conditions?
Probably.
Do you have a recommendation?
I do. I have one that's not here. It's broad, but condition number five states the applicant should, shall abide by all approvals conditioned state agencies, town boards, departments, and commissions. I would just make that one a little more specific to the conservation commission.
Conservation commission.
And... Have you seen the conditions that we have?
Yes. Yep, I've seen that. One more comment too. We are using Graves Engineering to do the notice of intent for conservation. That should be submitted this week.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, actually...
All ex-conditions, we want to go one, two.
Sure. I forgot to ask to the applicant, so you have existing asphalt here with a driveway that goes off the back of the site. What's the plans for those? Is this being left or is it being moved and seeded, demolished?
Actually, so the paved area on the right-hand side of the existing house, it actually goes with the house and it's actually a pretty nice area for overflow parking. There's not a lot of parking right in front. There's enough for a few cars, but we were going to plan to leave that. We could do something if you wanted, but it was kind of nice, especially when we're having open houses and we had a little bit of traffic there. You have more than two cars. It was a nice place to pull off. There's probably 40 feet to the right of the house and a nice little driveway just for overflow.
I see. It kind of stops right there.
Yeah, it's, exactly. It stops right there and then I'm guessing that this is the back of the barn here where the dairy trucks probably came in and loaded up, so my guess is that that will all be taken out. That barn will be demolished and that big area of pavement right there will end up being the house, the new house's backyard.
I forgot to ask about that.
Yeah, so, well, I guess my question would be, do nine and 10 apply? Is this in the beetle zone?
10, yes it is.
Okay, so, and then on three and four, three would make it issued solely to the applicant and non-transferable. Four would be proposed use of construction is not commenced within good cause in a period of blank months. You wrote...
24 is usually.
24 months?
24 months.
Using 24.
24 months.
Put one through 10 minus nine.
One through 10 minus nine and number four would be 24 months.
Do you want to see that? Yeah, I'll look at it. Sorry. Yeah. 24 months?
Yes.
And just to clarify through the chair, that number four, that's construction start.
Oh, that's not true.
Yeah, that's not completion.
Right. When do you plan on starting that?
As soon as we get through conservation, we'd like to have the foundations in the ground before winter if possible, so we get the frames up. We actually have potential buyers for one of them already if this goes through, so they're interested in like a spring delivery.
Any concerns?
No.
Just for the record, for the chair, item 10, this is in the Asian Longhorn beetle area, so it's a, there are policies to follow, the 11th amended order for tree removal and such.
Are there any trees on it?
Yeah, it doesn't seem as much, but you'll run into a couple.
There's like an apple tree, a pear tree here and there. Probably going to keep those.
They don't eat that stuff.
Very good.
Where's the ID?
You made the motion already?
Yeah.
With the stipulations.
Yep.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Go with you.
This is yours.
Yeah.
So applicant Welcome Homes requesting a special permit for earth fill into Section 9.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws at Elmwood Street, rear Gibson Road, Auburn, Mass. Map 12, Lot 20. Provide us with an update on that, Peter?
Sure, so with the last meeting, which was a few months ago, the next step was going to be go to Graves for a...
Peer review.
Peer review, which quite honestly was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, so to say, on this project. So at this point, we've had a couple complications, significant ones. My relationship is I let go of HS&amp;T Group, very disappointed in their handling of this whole thing and I think they did more harm than good, in my opinion.
What group is that?
HS&amp;T Group.
It was the engineer.
That was the engineer.
The engineer.
Yeah, so it was a difficult site from day one and unfortunately, it just so happened that they had done a survey for the seller at the time, so they had, you know, all the information, so it was kind of a path of least resistance and they made a good pitch and it just, things didn't go very well. So I'm no longer retaining their services. Another curveball that happened recently was I have a second mortgage with the seller and he passed away a couple months ago. So unfortunately, we're in a little bit of a holding pattern because I need to meet with their heirs and see if I can continue, because at the moment, I put a call into them. This is just only a week old though. He passed away about a month and a half ago, so I just found out from the attorney a couple weeks ago. So I'm waiting to hear back if, you know, they're going to continue to work with me because I originally had two years to pay them back for the money that they lent me basically to purchase the land and that two years is up now in October of this year. So unfortunately, that application process with Gibson is a year and a half old or so and we couldn't really get anywhere quick enough.
So you're saying you have to pay them back?
Yeah.
Or they gave you a mortgage?
They gave me a mortgage, right, right, so...
And you're paying them for the mortgage?
Exactly, yeah. So I had payment arrangements with them based on sales and things were going fine until, you know, it didn't go fine and now it's, too much time has gone by and then the person who gave me the mortgage passed away, so it's in his trust. He was 98 at the time, so we kind of thought maybe it would have been, but he did set it up in a trust and now we're waiting to hear back from the trustees on this. And so I can't really write any more checks to a project that I don't know the status of right now. Additionally, I came up with a Plan B to, and worked with Bill Coyle on revising the plan to a much simpler, easier, three single-family houses over there instead of eight units in offset of doing any infrastructure improvements. Leave the road the way it is, private, and two, three, single-family houses. And after review, he met with Joanna on that and he met with the sewer, can't think of his name.
Jeff Mitchell.
Yeah, Jeff Mitchell, and they were in favor of me going with Plan B. I could still go the other way, but I kind of proposed, in order to offset, get things done a little bit quicker, not lose the property and try to continue developing over there. We tried to find the path of least resistance, which would be a couple single, two or three single families over there, which the abutters would probably be happy, some would be happy, I don't know, who knows? I'm not sure at this point, but, so that's really the update. So until I hear back from the trustees on if I can move forward or not, my hands are tied a little bit, so I'll have to just continue until I hear back from them.
Is there any way that he can withdraw without prejudice and then come back? Rather than continue, continue, continue?
It's up to both the applicant and the board. The board and then it's just like that where you see some of these circumstances could obviously permit that and in addition to that could also waive application fees for me.
I think that would be a much better path to take is to withdraw without prejudice and the board would, if the board as a whole decides to waive any fees when he comes back, rather than continually continue this.
Right.
What do you think?
I'd like to, did you want to add anything to the discussion?
No, I was just to find out what the updates were.
Okay.
Well, also the Plan B that you talked about, that you looked at with Bill Coyle, now you have to come by us with that too.
Yeah, well, okay, so here's the other thought.
That would have to be a full permitting and going through it, just as if you were coming in with a brand-new project.
Well, let me explain some of the ideas. So Plan B is the new engineering company, one, I'm quoting a couple different ones right now, trying to get ideas for Plan B, but one of the thoughts was to design the three single families with less than 500 yards of fill, which would eliminate the need for me to come to you guys. So if I do three single families and they can design them in such a way where I need less than 500 cubic yards per lot, then I don't need to come back. However...
That's true.
That's going to be somewhat challenging, but if I do three...
That's the regulations too. As I spoke before, the fill, it's got to be compacted in a certain way or it's got to have age with it, if it's not compacted and everything like that. It's not just, you can't just dump 500 yards in and then put the foundation.
No, no, the compaction and things like that are really about the structure and not necessarily the backyard, but I don't know yet if we can design, you know, a few single families over there because they'd be bigger lots, so maybe we can grade them differently and instead of, you know, having them more, it would be much less dense, so it would have more area, maybe you can spread things out and...
So on the total land, where you now have proposed up to seven lots, right through 10 there, whatever it is, on Gibson, there'd be three.
Three, yeah, so right now there's five, five half-acre lots or so and lots three, four, and seven were approved through the ZBA for duplexes, so there were two single families and three duplex lots. But we would come before the board, one of the, one of the conditions Bill was thinking is a new A&R plan, right, to split the land. Instead of five, it would be three, you know, and obviously that would be, that's an interior lot line change anyway, so that, that wouldn't really be too much there. But whether or not we can design it in a way to keep it under 500 yards is still a question mark. My guess is no. My guess is still would probably have to come because of the slopes, you know, we might need, still need the, need the fill permit, but an easier plan, not the detention, not the road, not the water, the sewer, you know, and Bill was saying, I had granted myself, I don't know if you guys remember this, a 20-foot easement right along the front of the property to run the utilities in and through the process, Bill was thinking, Mr. Coyle was thinking, put him in the road for us. And now he's like, okay, if you're going to do the three single families, put him in your easement, stay out of the roadway. So that's, he gave me a couple points, just three ideas, a new A&R lot, a new A&R plan, the utilities in my own easement, so other people wouldn't think that they're accessible to connect to, really, you know, they're not town utilities really, they're like being run on my private property as opposed to town utilities. So that relieved some responsibility, I guess, from his standpoint or from the town's standpoint. And then design it with the least amount of fill that we can, which we had been trying to do the whole time. And those were his three thoughts for me to take away and try to meet with another engineer. And one engineer is Summit out of Oxford. I'm not sure if you had any experience with them, but just took it from another builder, recommendation that they had worked with them before and had success, so just trying to, you know, find some other ideas out there. And Graves' plate was a little too full with all the other things I had also.
Do you want to withdraw the application or not?
If I may, I almost think, given the timeframe, it wouldn't be appropriate for the withdrawal today, in my opinion. I think we may wish to continue for another period of time for if the modifications aren't made by then, the withdrawal could be submitted by the applicant if he feels that sufficient by that time.
What do you propose as the timeframe?
I say you do it for the December meeting. Because you get the November 10th meeting coming up. We could do that if you want. The December meeting, we're looking at either the 8th or the 15th, should give you some time to tie everything together.
The new engineer, Summit Engineering, said that they would be able to have the Plan B done for me in two to three weeks because it's a much simpler plan, right? Three single families, a new A&R plan, and some different grades. So a much simpler plan there, it's just I have to wait to hear back from the estate.
Right.
So if I don't hear back from, you know, in the next, what is it, month and a half or so, then I could withdraw. That makes sense to me, you know, let them, I just gave a call into them last week, I'm waiting to hear back from them, so, you know, it makes sense that, you know, give me a little bit of time before I withdraw and then we can kind of reassess and come in with a new plan, makes sense if, if I can still look forward.
If you do withdraw, okay, without prejudice, you at any time can call Mr. Benoit and set up a discussion, which is not a vote, it's a discussion, to find out how things are going. So you've got two options, basically, okay? If you want to, the only thing that we had a problem with in the past is constantly continuing when we knew for a fact that there's no way that the project could be done in a, in a light continuance manner.
Right, yep.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I think the only two suggestions I would make, first one is we know the area, we've heard from the neighbors, has a lot of drainage issues, so if this is something that is going to be delayed further, just to, you know, be in your interest, I think, to look into that and make sure it's being left in a good state. And the second thing would just be to strongly encourage you to strongly vet the engineer you work with, so that you don't end up in another...
Another situation like that.
...continual process and the town seemed like they were doing a lot of hand-holding previous to it. Just want to make sure that you come in and say a good team, especially considering it's such a challenging site. I think that might alleviate a lot of the concerns and issues.
You've had plenty of time to see the concerns of the neighbors and the planning board and the other town agencies. So it'll be your fault if you, if you miss them.
Yeah.
There's no relief for that.
Yeah, the challenging thing for me is, you know, not having a lot of experience with a particular engineer, it's like the first project on this or that, even the, even the notice of intent on something small like 56 Packagug, you know, I don't know, I took the recommendation from Graves because I had heard that they were good, but I haven't been successful with them yet either, so I'm hoping they'll deliver. I'm guessing they can, but, so that's, that's basically the update. At this point, given some of the concerns from the lender, I also have, I have a first mortgage, I have a second mortgage, the seller was a second mortgag. I'd rather not withdraw just yet, but I, only because I think that would look significantly bad when I go meet with my second mortgag that I haven't even, that I don't have anything really. If at least I continue, then I have a plan next time. If I don't hear from them or something like that, then I can make a better decision.
So the December meeting probably makes more sense?
The next one, if we allow a continuance instead of withdrawal, might be like a six-month one, because it's, you know, three months is kind of quick, two months not even, but maybe you'll have something by then.
Yeah, and all I have to do is...
But you might have to wait a year after the death of that person before they can even settle anything.
Well, the good thing is, and I don't know legally, but I purchased it from an estate, so he, I'm sorry, not an estate, a trust. So the land was already in his trust, so hopefully there's a trustee in things and it just hasn't been enough time for them to respond yet, I think. So I've just got to, you know, do that legwork. My attorney was out, she's got to contact their trustee attorney and move the thing forward. The original attorney that was handling the closing and things and the mortgages said that his preliminary discussions with them seemed like they would be willing to work with me, but, you know, he's not handling the next piece, so it looks like we could move forward and for the sake of not having to spend, you know, 150 extra thousand dollars before I could make a penny over there, you know, just three single families would be, I think, you know, pretty easier, or much easier for me anyway, smaller project and a, on a challenging site, might be the way to go.
Okay.
I'd like to stop stressing out about the project, you know, actually move forward.
Through the chair, would November 10th or December 8th be better for you, you think?
I think December 8th, only because November 8th is kind of quick. It's only really like, not even three weeks, I don't think. But if I happen to hear back, you know, I'll come in, absolutely, if I know, as soon as I hear back from the trust, then I can move forward with the Plan B for the engineer and get you some new documents so I can get on the next agenda if I can produce some quick enough.
In that instance, it might be better to choose the November 10th because that gives you the ability to do that. If you continue until the 8th today...
Oh, I see what you're saying. So continue until the 8th, so then we can decide what we're going to do then in November.
Okay, yep, that's right. But it's up to the, up to the board.
I suggest we do December 8th, just so it's not continually coming back here.
And it's not really going to matter to me much because I'm not going to start billing till the spring anyway.
Yeah, so make a motion to continue to December 8th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bye. See you on the 8th.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so continue it to the 8th, so then we can decide what we're gonna do then, okay?
But it's up to the, to the board.
I'd suggest we do December 8th, just so it's not continually coming back here.
And it's not really gonna matter too much, because I'm not gonna start billing till the spring, anyway.
Yeah, so make a motion to continue to December 8th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
See you on the 8th.
Initials and sign that, just because it's past 3:00.
So we don't have to sign one in November, too.
Good luck.
Yeah, so if, if, in hindsight now, it looks like I paid way too much for the land, but live and learn, I guess, you know, but, all right, thanks, guys.
Hopefully learned.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think Matt can give you recommendations, but you may want to talk to him a little bit about some of the.
Engineering?
That have gotten, you know, approved applications or something. Yeah, we can give you a list of engineers that have been.
Give him the open list, and he decides.
I can't recommend one in particular, I can give you a list of who's been.
That's why, you know, I was, I actually, when I had come, there was an engineer that was successful bringing a plan, I tried to work with them, and got nowhere, too. So I'm like, you know, I think when I'm a new customer, you kind of push down the bottom of the pile, you know, fortunately, because everyone's pretty darn busy right now.
Lot going on.
Yeah, there is. Sorry, guys, thanks for.
All right, thank you.
See you next time.
All right, so the Herb Chambers was continued, and there's nobody here for that.
Yep.
Board discussion, town meeting, October 27th. What would you like to say about that?
Through the chair, that's town meeting date, it's Tuesday, 7:00 at HS. We have two warrant articles on, our moratorium for marijuana, and the alternate members of the planning board, as well as the road acceptance for Powellville Road, so we have three articles on, I'll be there to represent the board for those items, and members are welcome to attend.
What are you gonna be talking about with the alternate members?
That's in case they ask, it's just, we're trying to get that approved, and questions come up, I'll be there to answer it.
I think I'd like to see what you're gonna say, if you, if you're going to speak in behalf of both the alternate and the marijuana.
Sure, what I would do is read the exact memos we, we sent off as a board and reviewed and approved, so, as folks ask questions, I would defer to those documents as well.
Okay, next.
Jury Square sight walk. Matt?
Sure. Yeah, sure, so we met on Saturday, Wendy and John met with me there, and with Eric Smith from CMR PC, and we walked to the Jury Square, the overlay proposal for the, kind of down Route 12 all the way to the overpass, and looked at some of the different businesses in town, and some of the proposed visions for those, for those businesses and future development, and, I mean, kind of turned to each of the members, kind of discussed some of the things you found.
A little bit about the density, where there might be opportunity, Route 12. Took a walk up in the back of the neighborhood and looked at the neighborhood, the few houses that are up in the back of, whoops, to five cent savings, where it dead ends onto the mass plate.
That's Hob Street.
Yep, on 290.
Yep.
Did any of these people take into consideration that all the businesses, people, private owners, et cetera, be invited to this, or sent a letter, and?
Oh, absolutely, this, this is just a review, right now, it's a technical review for us, if we were trying to impose this overlay district in any way, we have to have public forums and invite the members of this overlay.
Yeah, this is a very preliminary.
Yeah, this is a study.
I've just taken a look. Jonathan?
Yeah, two things I'd say, the first one is exactly that, it was very preliminary, just kind of a brainstorm session in some ways, to see if there was even a concept that was worth pursuing, and second of all, I think, one of the things that I left thinking was, wow, look at the opportunity, and, you know, I think there were more sites than I even thought could be, you know, impacted by this, and also, as you look down the street to think, and you start thinking about what could be, it was, you know, it was really exciting to think about those possibilities and how it could change that area of town, so I was pretty optimistic believing in that, so.
The other thing I think it did, too, was, one of the things I took away was, we had a real opportunity to take a look at what has been done, and how well, I think the path that we've been on has, has, you know, torn through, it looks great, the outback and the buildings that had sat empty for quite a long time, all the new property.
Pier 1 and, what's gonna be the bank?
The TD Bank, it came out beautiful.
They switched locations, ready, net, which is good, goes in the back, the bank goes out in the front.
And there's, there's potential in the, where the old Staples was as well, so I just think it's starting to become vibrant again, and it had gone through a period of fine, and.
Can they turn that building around where Starbucks is?
I know.
What a stupid thing that was.
I think that's one of the things that we talked about, though.
Think that was Adam, Adam okayed that.
But one of the things we talked when we were out there was to say, you know, at least if things are gonna happen, we at least have this, you know, it would be nice to have something in place that kind of guided that, and said, let's not make any more mistakes, let's at least try to make sure that everything going forward is kind of what we want, because we looked at that, we saw, you walk down the street, you know, you see the.
A back of a building facing.
Whereas if it was turned around, it'd be a great, it'd be exactly the type of thing you want on that type of street, to have those open storefronts, a Starbucks, and things like that.
The store should have been moved back, and the parking lot should have been on Route 12.
It's just a missed opportunity, so I think, you know, that was one of the things, is, let's at least start looking at this now, so we don't make more mistakes going forward, at least we have the opportunity to make things going, you know, in the future better. I also thought the, when we talked about the TD Bank, they did the mural, I thought that was a neat thing, as we tried to.
Looks good.
Yeah, and we talked about how, you know, Auburn needs like a sense of character, and it's great to have things that, you know, kind of do that.
That mural, that photograph is coming down Auburn Street towards.
You figured it out?
Yeah, my mother.
Code Harris?
Laura and her sister, yeah. Yes, yeah.
Cool.
That's a nice photo.
It is, TD Bank, it looks great, but, so, and the, the fact that it's 5,000 square foot minimum.
Yeah.
Is, opens up a lot of potential opportunities as well.
But once we get something, if we do decide to go ahead and it gets further, at some point, as early as, I think it, we should bring in the people.
Absolutely.
So it's not something that someone can say, oh, wow, this gut kind of slammed right through, and at the last minute, we can't back off, because I don't want to be any part of it.
One of the, one of the very good points, I think, you made, if you could talk a little bit about when you had done an evaluation of the property owners in the area, what did you find?
Yeah, I think one of, yeah, one of the things we talked about was exactly that, and trying to make sure that we include the people who are there, because they're the ones who are most likely to have to follow it, and, or the ones most likely to actually be able to, you know, utilize it, so, you know, if you look down there, a lot of, there's a lot of very capable development entities that have, you know, major holdings across the country, and there's also some properties that look like they're at a point where they, you know, might be ready for this type of reinvestment, so, you know, I think it makes a ton of sense to bring some of them in, or bring all of them in, and get their feedback, and maybe they guide some of this, too, in some ways, where they say, you know, in order to make this type of development work, make the numbers work, it has to, you know, this would be good, that's not so good, and then we actually have something that, you know, the town likes, and that, you know, might actually happen, which would be great, so.
There's a nice piece of land from Shaw's parking lot boundary, now towards the Jury Square.
That's one of the ones we talked about.
Just take out the field, what's better, sort of put a couple of businesses there.
Well, you, did you have?
Some, the benefits only a few.
But, you know, keep in mind that this is everything now, what happened over, you know, once it's in place, it'd be there for a 20, 30, 50-year cycle, you know, those things become options on that type of timeline, they're not necessarily options now, but why not put it in place so you'll start getting what you want?
Right, so if we get a draft from CMR PC, through the chair, this would end up coming back in front of us like any other bylaw or proposal, where we had to hold a meeting for it, with the planning board to review the draft, make changes, amendments and such, so that part is sure to come.
Moving on.
Annual open meeting training?
This is, yes, through the chair tomorrow night, 6:00, next door, across the hall, under Board Selective Meeting Room, for any members who can attend, it'd be nice to have representation from the planning board if possible, so if you can, please let me know.
December meeting schedule?
Sounds like we just said December 8th.
December 8th.
Okay.
It's the winner. Technical assistance grant to amend the subdivision regulations.
Yep, I just, through the chair, we found out that we are a finalist for this technical assistance from CMR PC. There was an opportunity to have low-impact development, green infrastructure amendments made to certain portions of town bylaws, and I chose our subdivision regulations in our open space residential development bylaw, this way we can get some of that green infrastructure, low-impact development standards implemented into our regulations, and that part of the bylaw, it's a step that could be done through grant funding instead of by the master plan review committee or the bylaw committees, a little extra for us, we were just selected as a finalist today, and hopefully, we get the, get the funding, we'll see.
Bonus, bonus, draft bylaw, registered marijuana dispensaries, that's kind of, that's on hold.
No updates till town meeting.
Waiting for the, to find out about the moratorium for town meeting.
Any idea when that's going to the legislature? Is that waiting to be approved by the legislature?
Oh, we need a town meeting vote next week, before.
And then it has to be approved.
That's right, then.
We don't have the meeting minutes from the October, what was it, 6th meeting, those will be available at our next.
We did signatures for Diamond.
That's already done.
We did that.
Diamond signatures I acquired, ready for the start, thank you for that.
Anybody else have anything to add?
We do have, through the chair, we do have one set of minutes that was carried over from last meeting, September 22nd.
That wasn't approved.
That's right, this would be for Wendy, John, Paul, and Ron, Jim wasn't here for this one, so September 22nd is the one.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I bring up something about the Nissan dealership chambers in Prime, I believe it was Prime I saw early in the morning last week, and their lights, they gotta put shields on them, they spill right into the street, and they're almost facing you as you come up, as you get off 395. The Herb Chambers ones were on in the street, but way less dull, but I thought that most of those were supposed to be off at a certain hour, and they're not.
Adam.
So Prime, I think, was the, Nissan looked okay, I believe, but I was looking at the ones at Prime, when you come up the hill, they're in your face, and they were spilling right into the street.
Okay, and they might need some timers, too, when they're on all night, okay.
What time was that, Prime?
It was probably about 2:00 a.m.
Your wife knew you were off.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.